I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Planning Commission meeting of June twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. Can, um, well, this meeting is being held, sorry, in the council chambers as an and is open for public attendance and participation. This meeting is also live streamed for public viewing, but is not, but not participation. So at the link provided in the agenda. So at this time, I'd like to call, roll call.
Chairperson Blake.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Silman.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you, and, uh, Vice Chairperson Schaefer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Now we're at the agenda item for public comment. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and are and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. So do we have any written comments from the public at this time on items not on the agenda?
There are no written comments.
Thank you. And do we have any interested members in the public that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? All right, see, and then we'll move forward as council or that is commissioners. Are there any modifications that you would like to make to this evening's agenda? Hearing no, may I have a motion for approval?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
We're approving the minutes, right?
The modifications.
Oh, gotcha.
This is a very confusing topic for all involved, so every time, so just make note. So modifications.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Do you second?
I second it, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
No opposition, all right. Thanks. So we will move forward, and now we're hitting the minutes of the May twenty-fifth meeting, so are there any modifications that are necessary? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so now we'll move on to our business item, which is the approval of the Development Plan twenty-two dash zero three to allow the development of a new four-story hotel, Town Place Suites, at nine eleven Gray Avenue. So, uh, we're gonna have Mr. Doug Libby give us the staff presentation.
Madam Chair, thank you and good evening to the commission. I think before we get into the details of the projects, it's important to recognize that, uh, this being a development plan, that this project um, has zoning of C-three, our general commercial, and that hotels are actually a permitted use uh, in these three zones by right. So unlike a use permit where you can have more discretion, this is review of a development plan, how they intend to develop the site consistent with the city's design guidelines and the city standards. So as we move forward, so the project before you is consideration of the Development Plan twenty-two oh three to allow for a new four-story Marriott brand Town Place Suites Hotel with ninety guest rooms, ninety-six parking spaces. Uh, it's gonna include lobby space, gym facilities, uh, an outdoor pool, patio areas, uh, circulation. On-site will include a drive aisle, parking areas with solar canopies. Uh, landscape areas will be provided in compliance with the zoning code requirements, and access to the site would be provided by two locations, one off of Gray Avenue and a secondary access off of Louise Avenue. Now, the property is, uh, zoned, or excuse me, is located at nine eleven Gray Avenue. It's currently used, you're most familiar with, with the Enterprise car rental, uh, location. Um, and with the location here uh, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Gray and Louise, uh, I think it's important to note that the site is, um, about three hundred and seventy feet west of the the nearest residences uh, east of the property, and it's also located, the building itself is about, uh, four hundred and almost four hundred and fifty feet away from the nearest residences. Um, and I think it's, uh, also important to note that the, uh, Gray Avenue School, Middle School is located, uh, over eleven hundred and fifty feet away to the south. Uh, immediately around the site, you'll be most familiar with the Windham Travel Lodge, which is to the north. There's a chiropractic office to the south. To the east is a self-storage facility and also a vacant lot. Into the west is eight fifty Gray, which is owned by Sutter County. It's the former KMI uh, shopping center. It's partially occupied with, uh, some businesses, but is mostly unoccupied at this time. Uh, if we take a quick look at the site plan, you'll see that the building has been oriented, uh, up towards the intersection, and that's consistent with our design guidelines. You would see along the perimeter of the site, uh, the parking that's provided along the east-south. Um, that perimeter parking is gonna be have the solar canopies over the top of it, and, uh, the rest of the land, uh, parking spaces will be landscaped. The development plan also gives us the, uh, floor plans, which we included in your staff report packet. Now, even though, uh, the project was not subject to environmental review, uh, staff did have a traffic study prepared because we wanted to look at the impact of the project at the location. And so the traffic study analyzed two locations, Gray Avenue and Louise Avenue, where the, uh, level of service at that light is currently a level of service B, and post-project with the project built would also maintain that same level of service. Uh, just to the northeast, the intersection of Stafford Way and Louise Avenue, that currently operates at a level of service A, and that level of service will be maintained, um, if this project is built. Now, the one thing that the traffic study did identify was that when, uh, at Gray and Louise, when there is, uh, a red light and traffic is is backing up during peak hour, there can be times where it could be difficult to turn into the facility or to exit, exit out if you were gonna head south, and so the the traffic study recommended, uh, limiting the access on Gray Avenue to a right-in, right-out. And that was carried forward in your staff report packet as, uh, project condition number twenty. Now, the project does comply with the parking standards for hotels, which is one space per each room and one space for each, uh, two employees. Uh, the project will also provide electric vehicle parking spaces in accordance with the state building code requirements. And I believe based upon the number of parking spaces, they'd be looking at about nine, uh, EV spaces. So in order to comply with the city's design guidelines, staff is required to look at the architectural elements of the project, and so some of the things we looked at, uh, which makes the building a little bit more distinct is the recessed windows add depth to the wall surfaces. Uh, the light fixtures are decorative in nature, proportional in size, not commonly found in residential application. The stone veneer incorporated into the columns, uh, the decorative fencing and wall materials that have been included, and, uh, the coordinated, uh, color palette that includes a variety of materials, types and textures. And finally, the the blade type signage that's been proposed along Gray Avenue. And in your packet, we included a lot of color renderings. Some of them are shown here. I think the, um, the renderings really bring it to life beyond just the elevations itself. This one would be looking at the building from the south side, and you can see the solar canopies, you can see the entrance and the different colors that are proposed. Uh, this would be looking at the building still at the south side, but from the southeast corner. This would be from the, uh, Gray and Louise intersection.
Good question.
Yes.
So I'm clear. The actual back of the hotel will front on on Lois Avenue, correct?
Yes, the entrance is gonna be on the south side. And this would also be, uh, a view of the corner of Louise and Gray. Uh, you see notate the added blade sign from the side of the building on the right side of the image. This gives you an idea of the colors proposed and the various, uh, veneers that are proposed to provide, uh, detail to the structure. Uh, landscape plan has been proposed, and, uh, final landscape plan will be provided as prior to building permit, and then have to demonstrate compliance with the state's water-efficient landscape requirements. Uh, again, the reason why you don't see trees along some of the outside perimeter parking spaces because there's solar canopies that are proposed. Now, staff, uh, is recommending this project be determined to be categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section one five through three-two, for infill development. Uh, staff is recommending that your commission conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings, and adopt a resolution to determine the project is exempt from CEQA. Approve the Development Plan twenty-two oh three, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff report for the Town Place Suites Hotel at nine eleven Gray Avenue. And that would conclude my comments unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Doug. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience if they have any comments, questions concerning this proposal, please approach the podium.
Hi, my name's Heather Essman. Um, I'm glad that that we've got this. I wish I'd had this presentation at home. I probably wouldn't have come. Uh, I noticed on the, uh, the traffics, um, uh, like they put it on top of the map that, uh, they were gonna be cutting down probably six trees to get this, but looking at that, it looks like they're putting in more than six trees, so I'm I'm happy with that. And I'm I'm actually very happy to see that they're going to be putting in EV stations because they'll probably be the only hotel that has it here in the city, so they're gonna be one of those where you pretty much have to go to that hotel if you've got that, if you have to have that, but, um, do, do, do we know what's going to happen with the, um, the empty lot that's behind that? Because there has been some discussions on whether or not that was going to be developed at all, and I don't know if there was anything in the works or then, like, okay, because there there have been some mention of that. I I didn't know if there was gonna be something that might be restrictive for putting this in, but I don't think so. It looks great. So we need hotels. Go for it.
Any other public comments concerning this agenda item? Do we have any written that we needed to?
Yes, so we did receive, um, a total of four written comments, too, were provided in your packet, so, um, and they were available online as well, so I won't read those out loud, but they were from Jasmine and Marion. And we did receive two more once our agenda was published. So the first one is going to be from Haley Schaefer. I would like to, I would have liked to come to the Planning Commission meeting, but I am unable, I am unable to because of work, so I wanted to voice my opinions and concerns in an email. The proposed Marriott on Gray Avenue would be too close to the school, and the proposed site for the building is not compatible with a four-story building, and I also believe that it would be bad for the surrounding businesses. End of comment. We also did receive a hotel study for a proposed suite, uh, Spring Hill Suites that will be located on Woodward Street. Um, I do have a copy of it, but it was provided to the commission, and and then there was no additional comments related to it, um, but we do have a copy of the study. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further questions or concerns from the audience, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to fellow commissioners. Um, shall we begin with Commissioner Adams? If you have any questions, concerns? Comments?
So I have a couple of um, comments, let's just say that, because I always have an opinion about what's being built, so, um.
Why you're here?
I know. So I have some security concerns in regards to the parking, and because that area is notorious for having issues. So I was wanting to relay to the designer, I don't know if the, if they're here, it sounds like they're not. So, um, in regards to, um, what their security plan was, um, in regards to the building, um, and then I am not a fan of the pool out front of a hotel. I don't know if that's a requirement of Marriott, um, but I would say no pool would be my suggestion rather than out front. Um, I stay at a lot of hotels, and I hate when the pools are out front, so, personal opinion. Uh, these are more family-oriented complexes. I'm not quite sure the longevity that you're anticipating in a Yuba City Hotel, but I don't expect that it would be very long stays. Um, I am curious as to what the occupancy rates are currently. The study was really, um, a nice read. I appreciate, um, providing that. Uh, it is a bit outdated because we are now in two thousand two, approaching two thousand twenty-three, two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two, approaching two thousand twenty-three. There's been a lot of market changes. Covid was a huge impact. This does speak about that somewhat, but very minimally. Um, so I do, you know, I would like to have some occupancy information, and then I just went back and looked at what our discussions were at our last meeting, and we have we have another, we have, so we have, um, Holiday Inn Express that's being built, that's mentioned in the study, but is actually being constructed now. We have, uh, this project, we have the other project on On-Stot, we have, um, Spring Hill Suites that's looking at Target. I mean, we have a lot of activity right now in hotels. Um, do I feel like this is the best site for a hotel in Yuba City? No, I don't. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Silman.
You know, I see what you're saying about the pool, but I'm still trying to figure out how, here's Gray Avenue, and it, the pool is gonna be on the Louise side, which is that side street, right? Am I, I'm trying to get my bearings about, nope.
It's here, you pull in here.
Oh, you pull in here?
Correct.
Got it. Oh, and the pools are, and okay, and this is what, shrubs? This is a block?
They have a gate or a fence here?
Fence?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess my question is, yeah, what type of vent, is there, you know, when you're driving up, you don't really want somebody seeing the pool, but I mean, is there like walls or there's privacy wall?
It's a privacy wall, but then it's a, um, it's built up, and then it has a wrought iron fence around it, so.
Oh, there you go, wrought, okay, okay, yeah. And again, I don't know if we can change that because of their rules, but I agree, I think, just in that area. It's not close to the school as we see, so that doesn't concern me at all. And then I was really excited about the the EV stations, and nine, wow, that's mu- much more than I thought, so. Yeah, she's happy, so I don't have much more, but.
Thank you. And Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I, uh, I just had one concern, I'm just a question, I guess, for staff. Yeah, because, uh, I had gone through all the materials, got to the end, read the two comments that were attached, and I actually had the same concern that one of the, both of them expressed, was the height. Um, is, does that meet our current height code? Without needing any kind of variance for that? Yeah, in fact, it does. Uh, the C-three district has a maximum height of fifty-two feet, and that's what is proposed. That's what the plan was, yeah, fifty-two feet. Consistent with it. Okay, because that was the only concern I really had, was that we need all four stories of it. Um, because it's gonna stand out a little bit. It's a beautiful building, and if something's going to stand out, that would be a nice, a nice thing to stand out and for people to see. Because it does look beautiful, so that's my only concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Brookman.
It's a question more for staff. Um, the hotel we approved at B and Shasta, is that a Marriott hotel as well?
Okay. And Commissioner Dale?
No comment.
All right.
Uh, just a question for staff. I, I'm gonna go back and 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 dovetail on, um, Commissioner Brookman's, uh, question. The hotel that's on On-Stot that we discussed last week extending their their use permit? Not last week?
May.
It was a month ago.
Two days ago, yes.
That's a Marriott hotel, is that not correct? Okay. Okay, thank you. So Corner ninety-nine, back by the Tire Place and rail tracks, and so that is also a Marriott hotel. Okay, and I I I realize we're not in the, in the, in the business of of doing market studies and and seeing where the market's at, but was there any consideration? Because here's, here's, what, I I mean, having lived here my entire life and seeing what's happened to the Bonanza Inn and some of these other places, I'd hate to see us get in a situation where there's a large amount of interest in building hotels. Um, and granted, that's private sector market-driven, but at some point, where are we going to be in absorption? Are we gonna end up with a hotel that becomes economically not feasible and ends up turning into a shutdown squatterville for folks that, uh, yeah, I I'm I'm going to exchange, but you but you understand what I'm what I'm driving at, right? So is any consideration given to that in 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 staff's approach to these projects? Are we looking at it strictly from a use in a zone, and everything looks good, so we're we're good to go, uh, outside of CEQA?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, you know, these companies are gonna be spending millions of dollars to develop these sites. And, you know, as the the market continues to evolve, you know, some of these companies may decide to, before they actually turn dirt, they may wish to put the brakes on it, so it's going to be, you know, for these companies that are getting built now, you know, they may continue on.
Right. Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I, is our developer here? Yes, hi. Would you mind approaching the podium? I think one of our commissioners has a question for you. You may assist us with. Hi. What's your name? Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Adams?
Okay, thank you. So the question that I had, and I thank you for driving safely.
I apologize for coming in here late.
No, we understand. Um, so my question was related to the security, uh, the parking area and the what kind of, uh, security system do you have in place? What kind of lighting to ensure that we don't have parking, uh, issues? Because I do have concern in this particular area of our community.
As far as like darks, dark areas, um, we're required to maintain a a certain life, light level per Marriott standards. Um, and so all the, there's gonna be a significant amount of lighting, not, not like car dealer style where it's like, you know.
No light pollution, but, yeah.
And and we have to comply with all the dark sky initiatives, and what we're using those a lot of the solar, um, canopies for is we're gonna have lighting underneath those, and that's gonna help project the light out without having to have these huge poles. We do have two, I think it's either two or three poles on the site that are only about they're about eighteen inches tall, and that's gonna help distribute some more light on the, on the inner part of this, um, of the site. But overall, it's gonna be a well-lit site, and there's not gonna be any dark, dark areas.
Do you have any video surveillance planned?
Um, there will be, with every hotel, there's always video surveillance, um, and they're gonna be at every door, and they'll probably have spots on, um, looking at the parking lot as well.
Because you have a couple of corners that are
Yes.
you know, and some areas that would cause some concern.
Correct.
And I know as a, um, patron of many hotels that, um, I have seen lots of break-ins in cars, so we wanna try to reduce that as much as possible.
And the owner wants the same thing, because the last thing they want is a guest that doesn't have a good experience.
Right, Yelp is a powerful tool, right?
Yeah.
Um, and the other question I had was, um, what I I'm sure that you've done your own research and market research and and saturation. Um, the report that we were provided, um, was from two thousand nineteen, um, and we we were provided an average occupancy rate, um, for our community based on what was current at that time. Um, have you, do you have an updated study? And do you have an updated more, um, occupancy rate that you, now that we have some hotels that are coming in? So that's your market target in order to get a license?
We need to get up to the microphone so we can pick up the recording. Sorry, Sanjay.
Oh, please approach. Thank you.
So, yeah, it's been like nationwide, it's been like on a town place, it's usually a good eighty-five percent.
Do you have a target? Because, you know, of course, they're gonna look, you have a market target. What's the market target to have a town place?
Well, they did, uh, Marriott did their study. You gotta remember, there was two Marriotts coming in, so they did a study as well. And they said that it's enough for the market, it's plenty.
Okay.
Um, we're not gonna introduce for another, a while, like, for another Marriott or anything like that, so in that aspect, it's, you know, they did their study too before they gave the franchise.
Okay, and just as a note, Marriott, those, they're not owning these facilities any longer. So it can be targeted as a town place, and you can have a franchisee take that, but they can switch that at any time, uh, that their contract is up or if they renegotiate.
Twenty-year contracts, so it's pretty hard to get out of that kind of thing. It's a, it's a good twenty-plus years.
Okay, um, did I have, oh, the pool, arc, Mr. Architect. Sorry. Um, just so you can understand my comment that I made earlier, you weren't here to to receive that, but I'm just not a fan of a, of a pool in the front of the building, and I would, I would suggest removing the pool rather than, because, you know, of course, you're very limited on where you can put that. Um, so that was just my other comment. I would, I think it would be a beautiful area that you guys could landscape, put an outdoor gazebo area, a fire pit for people to socialize and sit and hang out, more urban space rather than a pool. That's just my.
You're kind of preaching to the choir here because Sanjay would love to get rid of the pool, but it's, it is a Marriott requirement.
Do we have power? To help you out there? Because, yeah, I just think that you could, yeah.
That is, that is something that we were pushing for as well.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, four months out of the year. Is it heated?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a heated pool? Mm-hmm.
It's
Yeah, I just, yeah, let's put a hot tub in and then an outdoor area.
It's based in a, they have a colder climate, because I think they're based out of Bethesda. And so they, they get snow and stuff, and so whenever they see sun, they just go nuts. And so it, um, they they always push for the pools, and so it's a very hard thing to try to get out of.
Yeah.
Um, so that that's why we had to have the pool. We tried very hard. I think we had a few site plans where we were just like not taking the pool, not showing the pool, and Marriott immediately just said, you had to have one there, so.
Okay.
But we're, we're on the same page as you are, and we would love to get rid of it.
From a practical standpoint, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm somewhat curious how this fits into the CEQA exemption. Given our current status of water availability in the state and, uh, half the Sutter County Valley has been denied water for agriculture, how many thousands of gallons are we gonna put in that pool to make people feel cool?
That's one that I'd have to, we'd have to look in and see how much, how many, um, gallons it would, the capacity would be.
We want I know, it's like, I'm gonna propose a water-saving feature, yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay.
I do, I do have a follow-up comment, just real quick, I I'm, this is kind of an assumption, I guess, on all of our part, but you do already own the land, you're I mean, you own the business, the enterprise business and the land and everything. I'm sorry, but you do own the land that this is gonna go, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because nobody asked, I'm thinking, are we doing this, and then all of a sudden, a transaction falls apart. No, they they can't get their franchise agreement whilst they Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. And my question is employment. How many employees do you foresee giving an opportunity to? Oh, yes, gosh. Thank you, thank you.
I would assume at least between fifteen and eighteen, is what 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 we're thinking it would take, but it really depends, um, once we get going, see, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a ramp-up period too, so.
Okay.
Could you, could you say your name for the record, please?
Sanjay Patel.
Thank you.
Owner of property. Thank you. All right. That concludes our questions for you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Before I call for a motion, um, I I I do have some concern, okay, besides the fact that it's a gorgeous I, and I like the pool, um, besides the fact that it is a gorgeous building, I do have so many concerns concerning, um, you know, being close to the school, the park, and the fact that it's the saturation rate of hotels that we're going through right now is of concern to me. So just stating that for the record. With that, I'm turning it back over to my commissioners and for a perhaps motion.
Madam Chair, if it's easier for the commission, you can make a motion for the recommended action as
Is that good? Okay. Jackie Silman? Need the motion?
Need the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Missed the motion.
The motion is what was recommended, uh, by staff?
Recommended action by staff.
Right. We have individual roll call, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
You come back to me, please.
Commissioner Silman? Vice Chairperson Schaefer?
Vice Chairperson Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairperson Blake?
No.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
A vote, a vote for four to three, motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to the agenda item, we have for future, I guess that would be Ben.
Actually, I'll, I'll take.
You'll take it from here?
So, we are looking at uh potentially bringing three items to your commission next month. The Highway twenty self-storage west of town, on the south side of Highway twenty, we're looking at bringing that to you. That would be a recommendation that you would make, that would ultimately go to the council. Um we're also looking at um rezone twenty-two oh one, Ampli Health rezone over off Market Street to uh remove the X uh overlay district uh for their project. And we will potentially be bringing forward a use permit to you for a bike county ambulance um to use a single-family home as a pre-staging area for an ambulance. So those are the items that we're looking at bringing forward to you next month.
Sorry, could you repeat the Ampli thing again?
So the um over on Market Street where Ampli Health is, so they, there's a X overlay district there currently in place on their property. Um and I think if you look at that, it requires them to install a roundabout at that location. And so they're looking at alternatives and in order to accomplish that, you have to remove the X overlays.
Gotcha, thank you.
And I should note that we are looking at, you're going to cancel um the next, the first planning commission meeting on July thirteenth.
Cancel?
Cancel, so that means that our next meeting would be on the twenty-seventh.
Is that right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. So uh Development Services Director should report.
Yeah, I won't be here for the thirteenth.
Neither will I now. Canceled.
I thought, I thought that was Sutter County. So I'm gonna have to get a hold of my, my other boss and say, I'll be at that one, but I will, I will not be here for the thirteenth, so just as a heads up. So will be, will be.
I was like, what are you talking about?
I obviously don't know. I think maybe I should start drinking again.
Goodness, no. Hi, Ben.
Okay, so there's not a lot of change since the last meeting, um just a couple of big items, well, a couple um items that, that are um we're talking about, and so the tree guide, and so at Tuesday's uh city council meeting, so last night, um the um Community Services Department, so Parks and Rec, um they've kind of had a longstanding project here where they received some grant money um to work through the city's inventory um to, and and then work through our municipal code, our design standards and produce a twenty-twenty-one Urban Forest Master Plan. And so with that, there's a, there's a big document that um is online, and I'll get you a link online and then I'll try to get you some hard copies too, should anybody be interested, and then there with that, there was a kind of a handy tree guide for our area, for some tree types. And so this is gonna be um another tool in the toolbox as we review projects and and look at landscaping and how we implement some of our design standards and um recommendations that come before you. So that's a big deal for um for uh the city, you know, steps forward and then with that, there's also recommendations on how to um make improvements. And so um I anticipate that they'll see su- future zoning code changes and maybe some design standards that will then come across your um, um in front of you across the dais for consideration, when you start to try to implement some of these goals over the, over the duration. So that's a big item, um really, as far as on the development front, I think um the most notable thing when talking with uh the team was um Mr. Pickle submitted for their sign application there, really, so they should be coming, coming in soon. Um and besides that, I'm really um, I don't have much else unless there's any questions for me.
So Ben, I think this is really cool, but why didn't we put drought-tolerant plants? Because a lot of folks are looking to that to redo their front yards and just, or is there going to be another?
I, I would say definitely in the um, the ninety, the hundred-page document, there, there's some more um, i- is there anything in here?
Is it, huh?
Is it?
Is it? But these are.
For trees.
For trees, but I'm talking plants.
Landscaping.
Yeah, cuz.
This was probably a tree-specific project.
This is only trees, okay, okay. Could you do one on plants, please?
Tree-specific.
Got it, okay.
I do have a question concerning this, or in Lua. So in the past, we had some council members who didn't like tree-lined streets for new residential development. And I'm just wondering where that is in the scheme of the city's projections. Because I hope we did not get rid of that, but just wondering if we did.
So um, so, so no, a- and um, but, but it's complicated, it's always complicated.
I know.
And so um, and so as subdivisions come forward, they come to the planning commission for review. And so what's been happening is that we've been giving the developers an option on the internal streets for having um attached sidewalks. So as a policy, we've made it clear that any um collectors, um any outside, um any arterial, so if you have a project on Lincoln, um the Lincoln Road will have to have those tree-lined streets, those parkway strips. And then the major collectors or the thoroughfares through there will be tree-lined with separated sidewalk. We, we have allowed the option for um connected sidewalk on the internal streets with a requirement for tree planting behind the sidewalk. And so they still have to have the tree planted, but then it would be behind the sidewalk and not be um a, a, a parkway strip. So there's still a requirement for a tree to hopefully keep the tree line element, but um, but it's a little bit more private property and, and how that gets controlled and what happens in the future on those internals. But on the, on the thoroughfares, the, the, they're um, they're separated curved with trees. And you know, planning commission definitely has discretion and and input. If there's more of um certain roadways or or different layout, you know, we're definitely um happy to take that in as staff and work to implement it. Um you know, there is, and we've given them that option for multiple purposes, multiple reasons, as you've probably heard at the dais. First, um some developers want to keep the parkway strip because it's, it helps them with their stormwater quality. Because there's some new California standards regarding, national standards regarding how to um how to keep an area where they can infiltrate back into the groundwater, so they have this, this front area where it drains. Uh uh and, or you have the opposite where they'd um, they, you know, for multiple reasons too, as far as um issues with who's maintaining the trees, is it a city tree, is it a private tree? When it raises the concrete, who's repairing the concrete in the sidewalk, which gets a little um complicated with those um tree-lined streets. So there's some pros and cons.
I have a question for you, Ben. I don't know if I'd be the right person to ask or answer, but um you know, with everything going on with interest rates these days, I'm curious, all these development plans that we've been approving for folks that are trying to build single-family in a market that needed such a, had such a demand for it, has anybody shown any pause to maybe slow down their progress in trying to bring homes out of the ground because of the additional cost homeowners gonna have to bear?
You know, I, I, I've heard a lot of, you know, people wondering, um you know, I was talking to Yuba County um Kevin Mallon today a little bit, just because there, there's some, people were monitoring the um sales price reduction, you know, the house reduction, a- and, and they're seeing that, that reduction come across. And so it's definitely hit the peak and coming back down. As far as um, I have not heard of anybody pull a project yet. I know that um KB Homes was really serious on that with Samborn and, and um they walked away, was my understanding, because they couldn't work out a price. But um that was kind of before this recent um, um recent um interest rate hike. Um you know, and I know that there's another national builder looking at that and asking questions, but I don't it, you know, I've heard people talking about it for sure, looking at it, you hear about the sales reductions happening, um but I haven't seen anybody walk away from a project yet.
I was just gonna say that the newest thing that I saw was um incentives on buydowns for interest rates. So that's now hitting um with offers with putting, you know, three thousand, four thousand dollars towards a buydown for the buyers. So that's starting to happen.
And is there any, um, any movement on the stoplight on Walton?
So the stoplight in Walton is, is, isn't, i- it's planned to be incorporated in the Walton Avenue improvements. And, and so right now, that's under design.
Okay.
Um but really, um I won't have the, the full configuration or the, the design for about a year from now. So right now, they've been doing the survey work, they got the design going on. There's some rideaway conflicts right there that they're trying to get kind of figured out on how they're gonna make it happen. Um but it is planned to be incorporated into that project, but we're still, we're still six months to a year from finalizing the design and getting environmental and everything done and then going to bid.
And I, can, every planning meeting, can I bring it up?
I am definitely happy to share.
To thirty-five years, can I please have that? Okay.
Yeah, your spotlight. Just reoccurring agenda item.
You know, I, I know some planners that would love a roundabout there, but right now it's planned for um a traffic.
I love a roundabout, I do, I'm such a sucker. Okay, so we'll bring this back to report actions at the Yuba City Planning and Sutter County update. So either Commissioner, I want to.
Oh, sure, I'll go first. Uh I'm not sure how many are aware of the application we had for a modification of permitted uses in the F-PAC zoning out in Sutter. Um for those of you that aren't familiar with that, the F-PAC zoning is, I'm gonna, I'll probably butcher this, but um food processing agricultural recreation and open space. It was a zoning that was established in nineteen eighty-two by the voters under Measure A um from Sutter. And basically what it does is there's a three hundred and fifteen acre piece basically from the western limits of the city bounded in the north by South Butte, and I think it goes to the levee and then is bounded on the south by Highway twenty. And there was a proposal by a property owner to add truckyards. That's been the hot thing in Sutter, Sutter County of late. Um becoming quite an expert on those. Yeah, uh so they weren't asking for a rezone, they weren't, they, they weren't asking for anything other than adding that as a permitted use in that zone. Um there was a lot of confusion about what the, what the county was able to do, what they weren't able to do because it was a voter initiative that got that zoning district established. But it very clearly states that the county has the right to go in and evaluate uses that are permitted, make changes that make sense. Um I, it was a very interesting uh public hearing, very interesting amount of, of public response, one of which was a, a letter from my sister-in-law, who I, I think I mentioned this last time, who um apparently did know I sat on the planning commission calling me a crook and that we were all in it for the money, not understanding, it wasn't the county that was proposing the change. Uh but in the end, uh the county um commission unanimously recommended the board of supervisors to deny the request. And so that goes to the board, I'm not sure what actual date, but I will update you on the status of that. The only other thing we had before us was, um I don't know how many of you are familiar with, You'd Star Ranch on South Butte Road. The Handy Family, known the Handy Family forever, back when I was a cowboy, I boarded my, my mule and my, my uh two mares and my, my uh, my gelding out there and uh they had to come in for a use permit for community garden, they have a wedding facility, they want to add on to that. So anyway, um great community to support, great project, that was approved. Uh so that's moving forward. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else for you, unless you have any questions for me about what's happening in the county.
The ranch, I, I thought they had that already.
Well, they did, see.
What was the?
But they didn't have a, they didn't have a use permit.
Oh.
And yeah, so um, yeah, so somebody uh filed a complaint and.
Well, it's good that it's, yeah, because I remember a, a couple of projects out in Sutter County that we've had to deny because you do have to follow the rules, so I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, nope.
That Jerry and.
They just kind of said, what could we ever possibly want to do out here and let's put it in the permit and let's get it done, and that's what they did and.
Way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Great job, Commissioner.
It was uh, it was nice to see them, I haven't seen them in a while since I got rid of my mule and my mare and my but uh, yeah, so that was a, that was a, a rewarding thing, so.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Anything to add?
Nope.
All right, all right, well, with that.
What's that?
Did it? Oh, my gosh, right?